That will bring us to item number three additions and changes to the agenda. If with a without any objection, we would like to move item nine B. The discussion on the HIHS food pantry. To five C. And the discussion. All right, without objection, we are moving that to five C.
There's confusion about why not.
All right, okay. Uh, any other additions or changes to the agenda? That brings us to item number four, public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board's selectmen. The board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the board respects the right of the public to provide comment. This time is not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office or the board chair. Persons online wishing to comment should type comment and their name in the chat box and you will be recognized. With that, if there's there any public comment? Please. Um, come a little closer to the table and then just your name and address and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tony Libran. I live at twenty four. And I'm speaking as an individual. I want to express my disappointment regarding the Board of Selectmen's decision to move forward with the thirty year agreement with the common CDC. While many residents were aware of the general idea and discussions surrounding the project, the final proposal and the long term financial implications were not shared with enough notice or transparency. It was concerning to hear that the final proposal was received the same day it was voted on. Entering into thirty year legally binding agreement should involve thorough review and ample time for both the board and the public to understand the details and explore all options. I have great respect for the Board of Selectmen and appreciate all you do for the community. But this decision felt rushed and left a bad impression. The agreement impacts our town for the next three decades. And residents deserve more opportunity to review and provide input before a vote was took place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
As part of tonight's, I'm Ron Cole and I'm here tonight as the Vice President of Common CDC. Tonight, as part of our agenda is to recognize Dan Larson for his years of service. And I want to thank Dan and the entire board for their support for affordable housing in Hebron. It began in twenty twenty two with the creation of the Housing Choices Committee by the board, which produced a comprehensive and thoughtful report that was approved by the board for the creation of seventy five new affordable housing units in five years. That support continued with the board's approval in twenty twenty three to accept our proposal to build fifty of those seventy five units on sixty Church Street site. We continued to work together and submitted a grant to the Department of Economic and Community Development to create additional water resources to build this housing, which hopefully will generate additional water to continue economic development in the center of our village. The town's support continued with the approval of the sewer commission for the housing project and recently planning and zoning commission gave it its enthusiastic approval of the plan. It continued two weeks ago with Board of Selectmen's approval of the property tax proposal offered by Common CDC that was in line with state guidelines and made progressive increases each year. Without the timeliness of this decision, we have been pushed back an entire year to apply for the competitive nine percent tax credit programs in this cycle. The benefits of this housing in the center of town are many. It provides sorely needed housing options for those wanting to downsize while still remaining in the community. It provides options for those working in Hebron but unable to afford to live here. The project will generate property taxes, income from car taxes of residents at the property and additional users of the sewer system contributing significant funds to the sewer bill the town receives each year. This housing will add to the economic growth for more residents living proximate to businesses in town. By meeting state requirements for this housing project, it will help the town become eligible for future municipal grants that it might not otherwise be eligible for without meeting the targets that are set by the state for this project. We look forward to continue working with all of you in the coming years and thank you for this support today. And Dan, you've been a strong supporter of this project and many efforts that will continue to make Hebron a wonderful place to live and work, I must say worship. I thank you for your leadership and steadfast commitment to this community.
Any other public comment? Please.
My name is Susan Custance. I live at sixty three London Road. I feel compelled to voice my opposition to the Board of Selectmen's voting on the Church Street Commons Affordable Housing Proposal at the October twenty third meeting. This seems secretive and underhanded. The citizens of Hebron were denied the opportunity to make a critical town decision. When the Board of Selectmen are elected, citizens give their trust, confidence and discretion to the board members. We citizens trust the Board of Selectmen to know the difference between a board decision and a public decision. We citizens trust the board members to inform the public and share information. This should include when the correct choice is to let the citizens make the decision. When there is doubt and uncertainty among the members, the vote should not have advanced. I listened to the video of the October twenty third meeting. There was doubt about needing legal advice. There was uncertainty about having sufficient time to review new information. There was uncertainty about the long term effect of the affordable housing on the town. Yet each member who had those doubts voted yes. If the vote was rushed because the CDC had a grant deadline to meet, it is irresponsible and unacceptable. The CDC's deadlines should not be the board's concern. Hebron's welfare should be the board's concern. I heard a statement that there would not be more than eight school age children living in the complex. I have been told by board Hebron Board of Education member Kim Hills that the cost to educate one Hebron child is more than twenty thousand dollars per year. Yet the affordable housing complex would not be paying property taxes equal to that of a private homeowner or landlord. This would result in an additional tax burden on Hebron citizens. However, the tax abatement for the proposal is not the only concerning issue. There are many questions left unanswered because there was never an opportunity for asking. What is the application process? What is the financial vetting process? How will regulations be enforced? Is there a limit to the time a tenant may stay? What happens when the tenant's income increases? Is there a citizenship requirement? Many unanswered questions. I'm grateful that Keith voted against the proposal. However, the vote should not have been taken by the Board of Selectmen. This decision should be made by referendum. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment online? I didn't see anything in the chat. Any other public comment?
I will make my public comment at the last at the end, I guess. Or I can make it now.
That's. I entirely up to you, sir.
Uh, Daniel Larson, one forty seven Old Valley Road. It's been a pleasure and an honor and a privilege to be able to serve the town in so many functions and to wear so many hats. To the newly elected people. With your power comes responsibilities. Uh, one of those responsibilities is to the employees that while under the town manager still look to you for guidance and you have a responsibility to meet and uh communicate with them directly. Uh, to see their issues and to where uh or work with them, the town manager for the betterment. Uh, another thing I want to state, the people have elected you to lead. I urge you to look past your personal preferences and base your decisions on what will be in many cases, long term effects on the town. The best options for moving the town forward is what should guide you. Uh, and and there's many things that fall into that. Uh, and a lot of it's state mandates. Which we as a town are subject to those mandates, good or bad. And so it's not always easy. But we have been elected to serve and to lead. And I know that there are people that are upset with with that vote that was taken. But I felt it took true courage to lead and go that direction. The benefits long term. The water, uh, the the fees. Other taxes. Bringing more potential people to the center of town for the businesses for the town. I'm hoping will be a plus for the town. So I do not regret regret my decision. Uh, it was based on what I feel will be moving Hebron forward even long after I am no longer. So to the new people, stand on your laurels. Do what you feel is best. But do what you feel is best for the town. Thank you.
Any other public comment? There.
Eric Matthews, six nine North Street. Thank you, Dan. I appreciate what you just said. I appreciate all the work you've done for many, many years. And I wish you well for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, with that, we will move on to item number five, good to know special recognition. And uh we have a special recognition for Mr. Larson. The Town of Hebron Certificate of Recognition awarded to Daniel Larson with sincere appreciation for his many years of dedicated service on the Board of Selectmen from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty five, serving as chairman from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty three. His dedicated service as the deputy fire marshal from nineteen eighty three to nineteen eighty nine. Board of Tax Review nineteen eighty five to nineteen eighty nine. Burning official nineteen eighty nine, nineteen ninety. Justice of the Peace from nineteen ninety five to nineteen ninety seven. Fish and Wildlife Constable nineteen ninety six. Fire Chief, two thousand four. Uh, CIP, two thousand five through two thousand seven, and then again in two thousand nine through two thousand eleven. Board of Finance, uh, two thousand seven through two thousand eleven. The Peters House Youth Study in two thousand eight, the Library Study Task Force in twenty twelve. And as the Republican Town Committee, you've been a member there since basically twenty ten. But I I don't think there's much in the town that Dan hasn't done. Um, thank you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
And if any of the other selectmen have a statement at this time, like this would be a great.
Um, as a as a new member, it was wonderful to kind of learn from you on on how to run a meeting and and to get up to speed. Um, for people who have been newly elected, it's a very steep learning curve. It's basically like this. I don't know that I'd even call it a curve when you get settled in. And so you made that process easier and even on, even though we're on different sides of the aisle, you were a pleasure to work with. You were congenial gentlemen. And even though your watch here is ended, we'll take the next watch for you and I hope that you enjoy your well deserved retirement. And I want to also personally thank you for fixing my electricity when we had a car accident on my road and the cars were on my lawn and you came without question and we had such a wonderful conversation in my living room and I've never forgotten that. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Congratulations. And congratulations on your victory and where the hat went. I'm always a full call away.
I know.
If you want to just complain. Because there are those times where you just want to air.
Thank you. All I have is just respect. Obviously, I'm so I'm so new. I've I've heard rumors of Mr. Larson, but it was.
And I do exist, like.
I've known of him for thirty years. He's he's actually known my parents for decades. Um, so it's nice to finally put a face to the name and for the few months I've had him, he's been a great mentor. Um, so again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. There is very few benefits to being chairman, but this is one. We are gonna keep standing for five more seconds. So um, I have known Dan Larson pretty much ever since I I moved to town. Um, you know, my wife and I have been involved in politics in town almost our entire time here. And uh, as as was in his certificate, Dan has been very active with the Republican Town Committee. And um, I met him there and you know, he has been a guiding light for people in town who want to serve their community. And um, I and I hate to say it, well, I mean, I love to say it, but I have looked up to you ever since day one because you are the embodiment of what I think of when I think of a civil servant. Um, you are a servant of the people. You are always there for the town. Even to your own detriment sometimes. And um, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate your service to Hebron, but also what you've meant to me as a mentor and how I've been able to grow by looking at your example. And this is a plaque for Dan Larson. Because we are now technically the town council. Yeah, uh, Dan Larson is Hebron's last selectman, Board of Selectmen, two thousand nine to twenty twenty five and Board of Finance from two thousand five to two thousand. So, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dan. It's a pleasure serving with you for like thirty years here in Hebron as well.
Well, thank you. It's been it's been a pleasure. It's. I I just feel that, you know, people have a responsibility to work and help their communities to grow and and to volunteer and become a part of the community. And it's it's great. Now we have the Girl Scouts here, so. Uh, wonderful, wonderful organization. Actually, my daughters are involved. My wife was involved. Uh, one of my daughters got her gold award, which you all know what that is. Um, and one of the things I've always said, you know, to the Girl Scouts, Girl Scout leaders, I know we get a lot of times with the Boy Scouts where they'll bring people in for their Eagle Scout awards. I would love for the Board of Selectmen to be able to congratulate and thank those girls who have gone for their goals and to your to your leaders, I'm hoping that as these girls do progress and get their goals, you will bring them before the Board of Selectmen for the recognition that they so rightfully deserve.
Thank you. And that brings us to item five B, the Junior Girl Scout Troop sixty five oh nine two of Hebron and Marlboro Bronze Award. Do we have a presentation or uh?
Anyone else in front? Please, please do.
So technically they're coming before the town council.
That's it.
You're not welcome. You're running town council with open arms.
Yeah, where to stand. They taller people in the back.
What's that troop sixty five oh nine two with us come? A disaster, a true disaster hits for the community. They are doing this kind of act for their bronze award project. Bronze Award, highest achievement a junior girl scout can have. The bronze award is earned by identifying a problem in the community, working together to solve it. This time, the Girl Scouts learned that in some communities, they are struggling because of storms and parages. They made disaster kits kids just in case Eagle end end up needing. While deciding what to put in these disaster kit, they got over one hundred responses in a survey. They sent out the community saying they would use the disaster kits and what they would like to see in them. In the disaster kit, you will find a rechargeable lantern, a reusable battery pack, charging cords, first aid kit, emergency blankets, hand warmers, antibacterial soap, batteries and and a can opener. If you end up needing a kit, there are currently three disaster kits at the Douglas Library in Hebron, Connecticut, available to be borrowed. Inside each kit, there is a survey to provide feedback from the users of the Girl Scout troop. It's five oh nine two can determine whether or not to take something out, something else in. It was useful or any changes were needed to be made. Girl Scout troop learned a lot about the needs of others, the gap of resources during times of emergencies and how they can fill that gap. When the disaster kits take off at Douglas Library, the Girl Scout troop is looking to expand to other libraries or facilities to maybe easily accessible to the other community members almost.
Thank you so much. And that brings us to new item five C, the HIHS uh food pantry needs discussion.
My name is Dwayne Burney with the eighteen village Dwayne in Amson. I'm the Vice Chair for HIHS. We've been quite busy. If you look back in March, we had eight hundred and twenty two visits. In April, we've cut all the out of town people to twice a month. Last month in October, we had eight hundred and eleven visits where it should have been somewhere in about the five hundred to six hundred range if it stayed the same. So that's how much it's grown. We I have a a form that I'm going to be getting. What are we going to give you gives all the information as to what our hours are and what projects we have going. One of this coming up right now that's uh is a scary one. We have three hundred sixty one people asked for turkeys for Thanksgiving. Uh, right now we have two hundred thirty eight turkeys and turkey breasts. So we're a hundred and thirty three short. Uh, look like we're going to try to buy sixty ourselves with our money. And supposedly there is some gentleman or group of people that are going to buy the the remaining turkeys. So we will have enough. But we don't know. That's not, you know, finalized yet, but uh maybe they'll only do half of what we've asked for. We get our food from Food Share. That comes once a week on Fridays. And then once a month, we go to Midwest up in Manchester and pick up a twenty foot uh U-Haul. It used to be a twenty six foot U-Haul that was filled to the back. Now it's a twenty foot that maybe at best half to three quarters full. Their way that they handle up there, they have pallets set up and you can take so many out of each pallet. Uh, depending on the size of your organization. There were probably eight or nine open spots Monday when I was there. So they're struggling. Actually, about two months ago, they almost didn't have the monthly pickup because they didn't have anything. But just before Wednesday before seventeen semis showed up with food form to open up on Monday. So it's getting extremely hard to um get food. Um, Food Share. When I started with the pantry in, well, five years ago, uh, we were getting anywhere from ten to fourteen thousand pounds of food. Right now, we're lucky if we get three thousand pounds of food on a Friday. Uh, we haven't had any meat from Food Share for three weeks. So we have to go out and buy it. Uh, Monday night at a board meeting, the Hebron Lions came in and gave us ten thousand dollars to buy food. We spent it on Tuesday. Uh, so the one other thing that we did just this year, uh, if you saw it on Facebook, we asked for people to go to Amazon and order food for the pantry. Uh, the response from the Hebron population has been overwhelming. We've gotten somewhere between seventy and eighty packages of food. Uh, we've gotten well, the other day we had eight thousand dollars worth of checks. Five dollars, fifty dollars, all kinds of different denominations. So the people have stepped up. Um, right now, I think there are five food drives going. Uh, actually, we're having one of our own where ours is going to be the fifteenth at at Ted's. There's uh, Amson Lake is doing one this weekend. Um, who else is doing it? Um, at the meeting last night, I'm also a Hebron Lion, so the Leo's partnered up with the student council and they're starting a food drive next week. Where the kids bring stuff into the school. So there's a lot of things going on. People ask, what do we need? We need food. Um, we need uh, money or to buy the food ourselves. Gas cards and um grocery cards. Uh, you can get those and you can restrict them so they don't they can't buy cigarettes and all that kind of stuff, but they can just buy uh produce. I think what else we got? We got we also go out to uh different organizations and ask for money. Uh, we have a grant request in with Verizon. And we have one with the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving also. And we're working on a couple of others that are in their infancy right now, but it some of these take quite a while to get together and we've got pretty little limited staff, so right now we have twenty eight volunteers at the pantry itself and then on every other Tuesday, we have what we call the Red Barn. We go across the street here and uh Food Share comes on and hands out hands out produce and that type of thing. And we have probably another twelve to fifteen volunteers there. Uh, we only have one paid employee and that's Krista. She's our director. She works, well, we pay her for forty hours, but she probably works seventy to eighty hours a week sometimes. Right now she's extremely busy. With the snap thing, we don't know where that's going to go. Um, we don't really see it uptick that much in this this week yet. But probably next week, the week after, we're going to see something. Uh, Food Share is telling us, you know, uh, bend down the hatches because they're going to come. And if you've seen it on TV, they have lines all over the country. I was actually up in Minnesota last week and uh they're up there begging for food too. Everybody is. It's really um really sad. Uh, talked to Joel Courtney a couple of months ago. There was one point two million pounds of food coming into Connecticut. Um, Emma said, no, turn the trucks around. And nobody knows where the food went. Nobody seems to know anyway, but uh we didn't get it. Uh, that hurt a lot of people. Uh, we do have a just got a five thousand dollar credit, if you will, with Food Share because of what our uh state is doing. They gave them some money to go out and buy stuff. And so we can use it. Uh, they have three systems in in Food Share. There is a donated food. There's the food that Food Share bought and then there's the government food. Um, we can buy the Food Share food. But again, they don't have anything we really want. You know, it's not the stuff that we really need. Potato chips. We don't need potato chips. We get um Midwest has a lot of potato chips. Um, and those flaming hot things. We can get causes of cases of those stupid things. Um, and it takes forever to get rid of them. So, but that's where we're at. We're uh we're going to be strong. we're going to be struggling, I think, if everything hits the way it's supposed to. Now, I guess the the judge said you have to give it to them and well, it's going to take a while. And maybe you're only going to get half of what you get. Uh, one of the changes that is coming forward on that is every recipient will get cut twenty-five dollars a month. So that's going to hurt too. I think the, if you to look at the number of people in Hebron, there's roughly nine thousand give or take. That means there's, right now, it's four point nine percent of those people are under for, undernourished as of two thousand twenty-three. The number that they suggest in twenty-four was eleven point five percent. The national average is twelve point eight percent. So we might be a little bit better than national, but we're still hurting. Any questions?
Yes, are there income restrictions or income verifications? You know, so how do you know that the people that are going in with their handouts are actually people that would qualify for it?
The FEMA or Food Share through, because of what FEMA says, we cannot ask what their income is. We can only ask them what town they're from. We can't go beyond that. Now, some of the pantries are asking, but they're not using Food Share. But we're using Food Share and so we have to abide by their rules. Which I, I, you know, we used to get all the income information and that type of thing, but not, not anymore. Holchester, by the way, is to get their turkeys, you have to fill out a form stating your income and all that type of thing. You don't have to do it to get their food, but to get the turkeys for Thanksgiving, which is a separate program. Then you have to uh, fill out a, I think it's a two-page form, asking all kinds of great questions. That kind of invasive, but but that's their, that's their thing.
I mean, I've seen vehicles across the way. I've seen Mercedes, Lexes, you know, people are driving vehicles far, far better than anything I've ever owned.
There was a gentleman, one day he had a uh Escalade, beautiful. He's out there actually kind of cleaning it off while he's in the parking lot, waiting for the food to come out. And she goes, that's really nice. He says, yeah, he says, you wouldn't believe the thing is fourteen years old. So, you know, it's hard to judge based on that. Yeah, I look at it too. I see, I see some brand new cars out there uh, or looking like brand new cars and it may or may not be. Some of these people wash and polish them every day, it seems like. I have a neighbor that does it. He's out, he's out there washing his car every day.
I, I, speaking for myself, you know, I don't mind helping anybody in need. I will make sure they're in need. Because it's not like I've got any kind of unlimited bank account. You know, I've, yeah, lost a lot of blood for every dollar I've gotten. And uh, you know, you, you just
I wish we could do, ask those questions.
You know, it would just
Make it a lot easier for everybody and we have, we have a survey today and I didn't see the results yet. On the, there's a sheet that they fill out as to what they want. You know, if you have a family of four, you get so much. If you're a single person, you only get so much. Um, on the back, there's a thing, how many, how many pantries do you visit? And why do you come to Artisan, not go to your own? Some, you know, they're about forty-five percent of the people we have, clients, are from out of town. But if you look at Columbia, they have a closet. You have to make an appointment. Lebanon, the gal works for the town and she has to, if you, you have to call and make an appointment, then she has to leave her job and go to the food pantry, give you your food, then come back to work. Holchester, they have, they do Thursday mornings from nine to eleven and Thursday afternoon from three to five, I think, or three to six. That's it. And we're open Tuesday, nine to six. Thursday, nine to six, and Friday, twelve to five. So and the other thing we hear too is we treat you right. We don't look down on the people. Some of them, they scoff at them when they come in to get food, so they don't go there anymore. They come to us. I guess we're too nice. But we have twenty-eight people in there and they get along fantastically. There's a gal came in the other day, she needed a hundred dollars, I think, to pay her rent. She couldn't find anybody to get the money from. The gals there shipped in and gave her a hundred bucks and said, you know, don't have to pay us back. Krista said, we'll pay you back. They all said, no, it was our donation. That's the kind of people we have working there. They're excellent people. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I just have a stretch of copy. We're going to send a copy to the office so you can put it on your website. And I think it's going to be in the River East, either this weekend or next week, one of the two, so.
I mean, next weekend, there's a big Democratic pitch, you're going to be in the conference session, I already saw it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number six, appointments and resignations. And we have a motion for the Hebron Green Committee appointment, Mr. Larson, if you want.
Okay, attached is a letter and a resume from uh, Nassia Al-Sadi. Democrat expressing interest in being appointed to the Hebron Green Committee. So the motion would be to move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Nassia Al-Sadi to the Hebron Green Committee for a term to run until December two thousand twenty-seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Tealy?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item there is, there is a list of twenty twenty-five reappointments. Um, we are reaching out to those individuals to see who is interested in being reappointed. And that would be in an upcoming, there will be motions for some of those in the upcoming meetings. That brings us to item number seven, Town Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've, we've been busy, we've been inundated with FOI requests, we continue to have the staff. Other people work on fulfilling those, so we're confident that we're, we're still I bet that they're completed another whole round. I think everyone up to date has it right now. I don't want to say it too loud, but stuff's being distributed. So that's been quite a bit of work in the office. Uh, of course, we're, we're dealing with the audit as well, ongoing. We're going to have a lot of our, our time. Uh, we're going to be going to mediation for the Public Works Contract Union contract. That'll be Monday next week. See how that goes. And then CIP requests, we're working with the department heads, those are due November fifteenth. So we're gathering all the information and we'll be putting that together. That's ongoing. We had sent out the invitations. When they're swearing in. They've gone out and then it's sort of like the officials. It's on Tuesday, the eighteenth at seven PM at the Old Town Hall. Anybody that's interested to watch or attend that. And then we're hoping to set up interviews next week for the revenue collector. And then hopefully bring somebody forward to the Board of Selectmen for appointment. Trying to get that office filled. And that's what we're going to go on.
We offering a hybrid option on November eighteenth for the Board of Selectmen's meeting that happens right after everybody's appointed?
We didn't, but I think that's something we could entertain.
I'll be calling from my vacation overseas. And I'm happy to do it, but should I call or are we going to have like a hybrid with what we prefer? What's easiest? We can do either, maybe you bring a laptop. Whatever is easiest. And I'm also happy to just call Keith or anybody else that's on the board. I just wanted to make you aware I'm doing that.
Let us know what you prefer.
Yeah, we'll do, let's, let's confer the laptop and we'll do the telephone as a backup.
Mr. Chair, uh, when you do that, Andy, you also considered the citizens that they weren't going to call in also?
And in other words, hybrid. For the meeting? Yes.
That brings us to item yes, and as part of the town managers, just to add on to the town managers report, congratulations to Andy. Uh, you were recently recognized for forty years of, of service.
Yes, I was notified. I didn't attend the conference again this year. It was last week, it was in Tampa, Florida. But uh, they sent recognition to the Connecticut Town Managers Association, which I'm a member of, uh, from ICMA, which is the National Council of Urban Manager Association. And they recognized that I'm old, so. I've given forty years of service to ten years in East Tatum. I came to Hebron in January, the very early part of January nineteen ninety-six. So January will be thirty years here in Hebron. So it was nice to get recognized. I didn't know that was coming and I guess it was right on a screen and somebody, uh, the town manager from East Hampton did go. He's got thirty-five years and he sent me a little little picture of the screen and it was a big gala event, so I appreciate it and thank you for the recognition.
Uh, item eight A, ARPA update. As far as I know, there's no update on those items. That brings us to item eight B, the Department of Public Works Action Committee. I don't believe they have any additional information. Their next meeting will be the third Monday of this month. And I believe they are moving their presentation to the first town councils meeting in December. That will be their next presentation. Their meeting will be on November seventeenth. Uh, that brings us to item eight C, approved personnel policies. Uh, as far as I know, we have not completed our review of that. So that will get pushed to the next meeting. Uh, and that brings us to item eight D, approve the acquisition of property. The thirteen point two-five acre Hope Valley Road Simeola property.
Uh, it's good, on the, on the personnel policies, I'm wondering if you wanted to push that back one more meeting to give the new board a chance to review with the new people.
Yes, it'll be their first, there'll be two meetings, so not this next meeting, but the one after.
No, I would, I would say give them at least a meeting to review it.
I agree.
Yeah, definitely.
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. It's a lot.
Yeah, it is a lot.
It's a big document.
But it's good that we got started on it.
We did.
Eight D. Uh, the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee has requested the Board of Selectmen pursue the purpose of the property known as Lot twenty-nine dash six on Hope Valley Road, which consists of thirteen point two-five acres of vacant land. We discussed the purchase of it at our last meeting and had asked Matt Bordeaux, the town planner, to look at a possible split financing. After discussion with um the chair of the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee and discussion regarding them pursuing grants or possible reimbursement, we figured that it was probably in the town's best interest considering future land use to purchase it with entirely town funds rather than open space funds. So that brings us to our current resolution. And Mr. Fitzgerald, if you could read that.
Yes, Chairman. It resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen recommend the acquisition of property known as Lot twenty-nine dash six on Hope Valley Road, Amson, Connecticut, which consists of thirteen point two-five acres of vacant land and refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight dash twenty-four review. And further, refer to the Board of Finance for approval of funding to come from the town's unassigned fund balance.
Alright, so any discussion or questions about this new direction?
Uh, yes, I want to know what that would leave in the town's unassigned fund balance. Uh, in other words, what type of percentage would this two hundred and ten thousand impact on what we've got?
I probably could answer that better at the Board of Finance meeting, but the last report that I got was, we're at nineteen percent, but there's a lot of moving parts, so I don't want that to be carved in stone, right? That was the last number I was told.
Yeah, they, they won't have a final percentage until the outstanding audits are cleared. But it definitely is over the eighteen percent maximum threshold. And the amount that's being asked, which is two hundred and ten thousand dollars is, and, and I may be slightly off on this, is about a half of a percent.
Oh, give or take probably, yes.
Give or take, it's about a half of a percent.
Okay.
So it would, if we are ballpark nineteen, it would bring us down to eighteen and a half. But again,
Okay, because I do not want to drop over that eighteen percent threshold.
I, yeah, this is not going to do that. It'll help get us closer, but it is not going to drop us below eighteen.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think we resolved that the open space, that we want it for open space. Now it's just what bucket it's coming from.
Yes, correct. Yep, this, by, by coming from this bucket rather than the, the open space fund uh, will allow for future town purposes other than just passive recreation. So uh, because of its proximity to two other town landmarks, if we wanted to make additional in, in the far future, I have no clue what future councilmen will, will decide. Uh, they could use it for any town purpose they wanted, not just passive land use.
Adds flexibility.
Yes, that's correct.
Regardless, it's coming from the town's coffers. It gives us the ability to
develop, to, to use it for future town purposes as we see fit, yes. So if, if we wanted to make a third town landmark there so that it was easy access for the public to see three historical things in town, um, kind of, one, one of those would be, you know, we have the World War Two observation here on, on this property. So if, let's say, forty years from now, we decided to sell this town office building, uh, that could be moved down there and it would be right next to the old schoolhouse and the old church. Um, so it would still be in a historic area for town use. But, but again, yeah, it's just about flexibility and keeping our options open. And, and I, I don't see it being a financial impact to the point where it would, you know, hugely affect the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, that's, that's my only concern. I say, I want to make sure, you know, because there is a definite need to have that, that entity, that, that, that account, if you will. Uh, and I want to make sure, sometimes people will look at that type of an account and say, oh, we'll just take it from there. And next thing you know, it's not existent because it's been hit so many times. You know, some of the things that we as, as a town really need to start trying to do is, is figure out ways and financially, we haven't been able to do it in the last number of years. But, but to do things for some of our moving stock or rolling stock replacement and uh, yeah. There, there are accounts that we need to, to start funding, uh, you know, quite literally, we've talked about it for years, but we've never had the monies to do it. And um, we are going to be having down the road some tremendous infrastructure costs just on our existing um inventory. You know, whether it's the schools with the air conditioning, you know, a lot of this stuff is state mandated. Uh, but at this point in time, there's no money following the mandates. Um. You know, so. We need to try to. Start some rainy day funds and or, or, uh, long-term accounts to, to try to manage. Some of those, those costs that we just haven't been able to do in past years.
Yeah, I, I think that's another, another great, um, item about this. Fund transfer or, or the use of the unassigned fund balance is because, you know, the last two budget cycles. We have severely impacted what would be considered our normal funding of the open space account. Um, and, and. You know, our comments to them over the last two budget cycles have been. If something comes up, we will be there for you, so I think that this also. You know, gives us the opportunity to show them that even though they may not have gotten it as a budget award. That we are there for them when they have these, these purchases come up.
Hmm.
So, um. Yeah, I, I, I agree, you know, budget is always. A balancing act and, and it takes a lot of thought, a lot of, um, tough choices to be made. So I'm glad that we have this opportunity to show, you know, a hardworking committee like OSLAC that, that we really are behind them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the other thing I just want to touch base on, because again, people talk about, you know, the unassigned fund balance and why is it. What it is, you know, and a lot of those monies come from, um. Taxes that had not been previously been able to be collected, it's monies that. The town. Didn't expect to get. I guess it would probably be the easiest layman's terms to. State how monies end up in that account. Uh, whether delinquent taxes or, you know, sometimes grants, there's, there's different ways, different. Uh. Avenues that revenue comes into that account. Um, you know, it's not necessarily over taxation, but it's collecting back monies. Uh. You know, so I think that's important. That people realize. How that account is funded, how it exists.
Alright, uh, unless there's any further discussion, um. We will go ahead and take a vote on that, all in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye, thank you very much. Um. Any make sure that I can say it correctly. Any other old business? Okay, that brings us to item nine A, uh, adopt an animal control officer firearm carry and dispatch policy. Um.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, just for your information, that's first glance, you don't have that, but I.
Yeah, there's a, there were some, right, there was some additional. Examples of language or. I'm sorry. I'm finding it. But yeah, there was some information there from, uh. Ordinances. But there is no motion to adopt that as of this time. Alright.
So there is a resolution.
I mean, there is a resolution.
Right, it's your first glance and I knew that question was going to come up, so we wanted comments back from the Selectmen, how you wanted to move forward, if you had any changes or markups, we'd send it back to the Town Attorney. So we weren't expecting, unless you're feeling comfortable to act on it, I. Put it out the next agenda.
I personally feel that it is essential for the Animal Control Officer to have. The, that ability, uh, just, just because of the situations that they may find themselves in. Um, not necessarily dealing with, with domestic animals, but with potential wild animals. Uh, uh. Even down to and including potentially, um, motor vehicle versus animal incidents. Uh, which is a big one, um. Well, no, well, back in fishing game, possibly, you know, you used to have a lot of times you'd get called to, you know, deer versus car, the deer still alive and. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's just not humane to have. You know, a, a, a creature there with broken legs, but, you know. Suffering, um, you know, and there's the potential of, again, rabid raccoons or, or. A lot of other potential situations where, you know, that individual may need to. You know, take that type of action and they need that. Ability to be able to do that.
So we've been doing it, it was just, it's just trying to do something where Selectmen direct us to do, we're trying to clean it up and have formal policies.
Hmm.
And the legislation has changed, they now follow it at the Police Department, so we went to the Police Department and, uh, we went to, um. CCM and got, uh, what other towns are doing to reformalize this, because we didn't have anything in writing.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think it's, I think it's more along the lines of like, just like we did with the SROs, you know, just making sure that there wasn't anything. In there that we needed to tweak.
Hmm.
Um. You know. In, in, in case we saw anything where we thought maybe additional training or, or other things would need to be added. But. I mean, I don't necessarily know. With my background. That I would deviate from. The, the normal policy we find elsewhere, I don't know if the Selectmen would like input from. You know, the resident trooper or, or anything like that, or have the ACO come in to discuss with us, but.
We can do whatever you want, so this was run through the Police Department, uh, they actually, Mark Robert still worked on this to finalize it, then we sent it to the Town Attorney, so it was run through. Our, the police unit that we use to share with East Tatum, that's doing all of our procedures and procedures for the Police Department. But I, yeah, like I said, it's a first glance, and if that's the pleasure of the Board to have the ACO come in, that's fine with us.
And I, I can say, um, I want to say nine years ago. Um. I don't, I can't say, speak to whether it was a feral cat or just an outdoor cat, it was a coyote attack in my backyard. Um, Animal Control came out, was extremely, this is prior to this written record, obviously, it was extremely professional.
Hmm.
Merciful to the animal.
Hmm.
I mean, it was, you know, a terrible experience, but they came in, it was. You know, done very work with like very professional and, you know, just formalizing a policy that they already. Follow and have for, I can speak to for the last decade. Is, is great, I mean, if, if you feel you need more information, but. I mean. Really, it would just be the, the police officer coming and saying, yes, we endorse this.
Yeah, I feel like we have subject matter experts for a reason, and I think that in this case, given that this is a. You know, five-member board with, with varied experiences, if, if Officer Robert has looked at it. And it's in accordance with what he is recommending, I mean, I would be fine moving forward and getting this off our plates tonight. I've read it and it seems reasonable and logical to me as someone who's not. Animal Control Officer and Attorney, but it seems logical and reasonable to me. Um, and again, if he's worked on it, then I have no problem moving forward with it.
I feel the same.
And being kind of sort of in that. Ballpark of a realm at one point in time. It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I couldn't.
That's true, we have your certificate.
You, you have experience.
Uh, if you would like to resolve.
Uh, be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen adopt the Animal Control Officer Firearm Carry and Dispatch Policy as presented.
Alright, um, any other further discussion? Then, all those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or abstentions, Dan Larson.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to item nine C, the draft agenda. Um, if there are any additions or changes, and again, this is for the November twentieth, uh, meeting. Uh, there will also be a, usually what happens is with the swearing in ceremony on the eighteenth. Uh, there will be a brief. Town Council meeting. To elect the new Chair of the Council. So, um. That will technically be the next meeting, but the twentieth will be the next business meeting, if there's anything on there, please send it to Dory. Um, and copy the rest of the board. Uh, for their information. With that, uh, nine D, any other new business? That brings us to ten A, uh, consent agenda, we have approval of minutes. Uh, these are considered routine in nature, does anyone want to exclude one of these items or vote as a block? Alright, and we will be voting for the approval of minutes of the. Board of Selectmen October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting and the Board of Selectmen October twenty-third. Twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Uh. I move to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or abstentions. Yeah, there's. Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye. Thank you very much, Liaison Reports. A H M.
That's me, I don't have anything on A H M, I just have two quick updates for the Hebron Board of Education. Um, their student liaison, Amelia, was recognized for her outstanding service as student representative. And was presented with a certificate of achievement and a gold coin in appreciation of her contributions.
Sure.
And then additionally, um, their Director of Educational Services, Dr. Don Briere and Principals Katie, Uriano, and Michael Larkin. Presented the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five SBA C and P E assessment results. And the Board is pleased to report that their P E and science scores have greatly improved. That's what I have there.
Alright. Uh, Board of Finance.
Nothing.
Awesome. Uh, land acquisition has not met since our last meeting. Um, and no information on the RAM BOE, that brings us to item number twelve, public comment. Uh, any, is there any public comment? Please.
Good evening, Dan Lawrence, Six Hills Lane, uh, newly elected to Town Council now, and I just want to acknowledge. And all your years of service and thank you. For all the time you put in and I'm honored to. Become part of this committee, this, uh, council now. And, um, I'll do my best to, you know. Further than you need to P brand and work towards, you know, solutions for everyone. I, you know, I understand the responsibility and appreciate all the work you've done in so many different ways, so thank you, sir. You're very welcome, thank you and, and congratulations and welcome to this board. Uh. As I say, just. When I first started, one of the things we always tried to do was get rid of the D's and R's. And just look at what. Long-term is going to be best for the town of Hebron, and there's going to be times that. You may have personal. Thoughts on a thing, but. You know, you have to say overriding principles, what's going to be best for the town.
That's right, and that's, that's how I ran. Locally, we have to work together, we have to collaborate, we have so many things in common. I have many friends that are on the other side, Republican, being a Democrat. And I've had numerous conversations with them saying, hey, you know, eighty percent at least, we agree on. This is what we have to focus on, we have to focus on the things that we agree on and collaborate and listen. We have to be great listeners, right? And I'm always over. The discussion and, or maybe, I mean, you make a good point, I think about it that way, understanding all these variety of perspectives is so important, right?
There are. There are so many decisions that. There are so many facets that you have to look at, um, you know. The, 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 not the least, which is, you know, the town is subject. And it's every town in Connecticut, to so many mandates and so many. Unfunded requirements that, um. Yeah, we're subject to, we're just a small fish. Uh, you know, we're at the end of that feeding frenzy and, um. You know, so. That also has to weigh on your decision, I mean, there's times where you're going to say. This is so stupid, but it's required, and you sometimes bite your lip and say. We gotta do it.
That's the statue, yeah, so I work for the state of Connecticut as well. And I'm also, uh, President of a Union for P four, which is scientists, engineers, and IT professionals. And so I'm in contract negotiations now. I know Kathy Os and I know a lot of the members of legislature and that way. And so I understand that we're one of the small fish because we're a small town, Eastern Connecticut. Absolutely neglected by the state compared to other areas, the rich areas of the state, mature areas.
Yeah.
Understanding, hey, we have folks here that are of all demographics. And so, yeah, that's part of our challenge is, is, is finding that support from the state as well, so I'm well aware. And I'll work to use any of my connections to help our town.
Welcome.
Alright, thank you, sir, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No public comment online, any other public comment? Alright, uh, that brings us to executive session. Um, we will be moving into an executive session for the Town Managers' Evaluation. Uh. I will make a motion that the Board moves into executive session and invites Andy Tierney, Town Manager. To accompany us. All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay, or abstentions, Dan Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Uh, Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. Alright, we will move into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you all.